All right, so we need to order the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the gist is we're moving everybody. Vicky probably already knew that somehow. Anybody who wants to sign in or get a copy of the agenda, just maybe setting here on the bookcase, if you came over here and didn't stop over at the other building. Okay, so I guess we're gonna call a meeting back to order.
They wanna get a scan of the crowd.
All right, so I guess we're gonna look at our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from regular board meetings from May 4th.
What's next? Discussion? Call for the question?
I got a couple. Just on one?
No, we're on the board meeting from the minutes of May 4th. Okay.
New guy.
All right, that's all right. All right, so call for the question, all those in favor? Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from special board meetings from May 3rd.
Second. Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from special board meetings from June 4th.
Second. Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, so let's go over to our warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants.
All right, so, um, oh, okay, so, um, let's go around the table, and Mr. Reynolds, we'll start with you.
Let's go, start with our student activity account. I think for starters, since it's obviously my first board meeting here as far as approving warrants, so going through these, I do, my main question here prior to, I have a few questions in the student activity account itself, but my main question is, I want explanation, explain to me exactly what our student activity account is for. Is it, am I correctly saying it's a student activity account for student fundraising only, is that what it's established for?
No, it's not just for that, no.
So, my only reason I ask that, 'cause I looked, I checked under Montana code annotated, 'cause this question's been brought before, so now that I'm in the table here approving these warrants, I wanna know that is this correct or not too. According to, for us to have an extracurricular fund, they call it pupil functions, Montana code annotated 29-504, says the government of pupils of school within a district or the administration of a school on behalf of the pupils may establish an extracurricular fund for the purposes of receipts and expenditures of money collected for pupil extracurricular functions with approval from the trustee. If I'm reading that right, it's saying they're allowed, we're allowed to have a student activity fund and have it, but it's for fundraising money. That's, that's a check, I cannot read that any different, correct me if I'm wrong on that. Well, I mean, okay, I mean, that's all I'm saying is, 'cause what, I'm looking through our student activity accounts, you know, I, you know, I, you know, I got a few questions as to why we have driver's education in there, why we have the Florence Parent Teacher Fund in there, why do we have our lunch in there, why do we have in and out account, non-sufficient funds, parking, none of these are fundraising, these aren't children's money. So I'm approving checks that, and if I'm correctly saying this, these checks have already been written, the dates on these are 5, 1 to 5:30, or June, so these checks, it's telling me under code act, that they have to be approved by trustee or district, so therefore, I'm approving checks, they're an account that I, reading it, doesn't make sense to me that they're there, also they've been written prior to me saying I'm supposed to approve it, so that's my question on the act account. And the funds, the actual checks that were approved in from May, so everything against the code, it seems to me I'm doing everything wrong there, so I just, not very comfortable with that, I just bring it up to everybody to think about. And I know it's, I've been sitting in the seats for years listening, so did as much homework as I could on it, and that's what I come up with, so I think we need to take a hard look at our activity fund, because it seems to me like we got money in there, it's not, the law doesn't allow to have, and we're approving these monies.
They've been doing that since I was...
I understand that, I understand that, but they do, I'm, I'm...
The money we control here that we approve is district money.
Okay.
The money that comes out to pay expenses of the district is out of our general fund, that's out of that money.
Right.
The extracurricular money, that's the student-related stuff.
I totally agree with you, that's exactly what I said.
And that, they have the account down to bank, it has to be signed by certain people, they have to do paperwork to request the check, it's all...
Everything you're saying is correct, we're not arguing that, I'm asking why we have...
But Steve's have never touched it.
But why do we have, if it's, if it's children's money from fundraising, why is our lunch money in there? That's, that's money that's given to, that's federal money.
Because day-to-day money that comes in and goes out can't be done through the district office. We have to do it once a month at the board meeting, but we also have to have a way of, when kids come in to pay for their driver's ed money, they have to pay it and have a receipt for it, we can't do that at the district office.
Okay, I understand that, but code, Montana code annotated says we have to, so that's all I'm saying, not like, that's all I'm saying.
The auditors have never, never said anything about that.
The auditors review our budget and the extracurricular accounts, and they review the minutes of our meetings, they do a compliance check to make sure that everything that we are doing falls in compliance with state law.
Okay.
And it both got it, and each year, we have been told the way we are conducting this business is correct.
Okay, well now I have that code, and you said you'd look into it, so I brought that for all board members, so all I'm saying is, here it is, it's what I've looked into, please review it, because as a new board member and trying to do my job here and, you know, represent the taxpayers and do what's right, I don't feel that I'm doing it, so I just need a little more convincing by just saying that that's the way we've done it, and that our auditors say it's right, because the way I understand it, I'm supposed to live and die by Montana code annotated as a school board member, and that was the case, then I'm kinda going against it.
We can have Mrs. Culver come and give you a discussion on that if you don't make...
That's fine, I don't, it's, I'm asking you guys to look into it and explain to me what, what's being written out, that's all I ask.
I would be happy to take a look into this so that we can explain the procedures and operations of our finances.
That's definitely, I'm definitely gonna read that, obviously, so that's fine, so that's where I was at with the warrant.
So I appreciate your questions, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, how about you, Ruffin? Phil, do you have any questions?
I see a lot of money in First Amendment, is that to clear up any excavation for the gas problem?
Yeah, we had some issues there where Downey, on the playground, we had some Smith board that covered up the sidewalk that had been broken up for that repair line for boiler.
Those, thank you. Was the $10,000 for Downey, was that our, was that our actual audit?
Yeah, that's our audit.
So then, do we have copies of that, is that given to me?
Yeah, you can get a copy of that, which from, for example.
Somebody might, I don't know, totally hears something, and somebody might even clarify this for me. To expedite business at its meeting, the board proves the use of a consent agenda, which includes those items considered to be routine in nature. Any item that appears on the consent agenda may be removed by a member of the board. Does that mean that we could take one of these checks that's been approved and back it out of there?
Correct.
Or that we're gonna approve?
So if these checks are written, so you're saying that if I go through and I say, we don't approve 10 checks that are out of the activity account, what procedure if they've already been sent out?
They haven't been sent out because the checks are...
We're talking about the district.
I'm talking, oh, I'm talking about the activity account, back to it.
That is, I would have to look into the procedure for that.
So it's never happened?
No, not having that happen.
Okay, any other...
We're good with bodies of water a little more.
Oh, all right. All right. Any other, any other discussion on the warrants? Okay, so, yes?
No, and I think you made an error in the audits for five consecutive years...
Kevin, I'm sorry, we didn't bring the podium, but can you come up and...
Kevin O'Brien, if you can hear me, my name's Kevin O'Brien. Five consecutive years, one with, four with Jenny and Downey, who's the current auditor, and prior to that, it was Foltz out of Missoula. Five consecutive years, the student activity count was not reconciled properly by the auditor. They could not properly account for cash, and each year, in those five consecutive years, and I don't know about 12 and 13, there were 11 items that they recommended the district to fix. For five consecutive years, maybe two or three got fixed. So when you told Mr. Reynolds that everything turned out okay in those audits for that account, that's an error.
All right, call for the question, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay. All right. So, we want to set our special board meeting, and the date that we've been looking at is June 26th, is that still gonna work for everybody? I think that's a Wednesday, isn't it? This from me?
Yes, it is. What's the, the agenda for the, what's the...
It's our, it's our board board meeting that we do once a year, it's where we take a walk through the school, we handle business, we talk about board goals, we talk, you know, we usually start at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and it may be 8 or 9 o'clock at night before that.
That's a long one, okay, that's really, okay.
Yeah. So, is 4 o'clock still the time that works for everybody?
Hmm, it's a weekday.
That's Wednesday, and that would be 4:00 PM, and we want to set up for here. So let's plan on just announcing that the meeting will be here in the library.
Now, is that the meeting that, when we come back and have the regular meeting after work, is that the one where we handle the last of the June stuff?
Correct.
Stuff that has to be done before June 30th, you know, this might be...
A little walk-through first, and then come back and have a regular board meeting after.
Yeah, usually.
Yeah, sometime we take it, sometime we kinda take it in between, we start the meeting and start the work, and then we get up and walk around in the middle of it, sort of, usually. Okay. We won't start again.
All right, I'm here.
Okay, so now we're gonna come to that part of the meeting where we have public comment, with public comment, please remember that public comment is for non-agenda items. If you wanted to talk about something that's on the agenda later, we ask you to wait for the discussion portion of that motion or that item. No discussion of personnel issues or student issues at this time, and everyone has to proceed in a civil tone, I need you to stand up and say who you are, and be sure that everybody can hear you, since we didn't bring the podium over tonight, so is there any public comment at this time? Mr. Perrils?
Yes, I have some letters for the board, can I bring this up, or should I bring it up after? Welcome.
Bring them up to the table, thank you, please.
For four members of the board. I hope everybody can hear me. This is directed to Mr. Finley, vice chair, Ms. Cornish, Ms. Rose, and to Colby Reynolds. On May 29th, 2013, I wrote a letter to the school asking for agenda items to be put on the agenda. Unfortunately, wrote 613 instead of 611, but it was refused because Mr. McGee, in an email to me, said that after speaking to the board chair, Pat Appleby, it was determined that replacement on the school board agenda would be denied. Mr. McGee also cited school board policy 1420, which states that...
...to me, said that after speaking to the board chair, Pat Appleby, it was determined that replacement on the school board agenda would be denied. Mr. McGee also cited school board policy 1420, which states that the superintendent will prepare the agenda. Mr. McGee cited I didn't follow the correct complaint process. Now I say, the complaint that I had was against Mr. McGee, the superintendent, and Pat Appleby. On May 28th, I attended a financial budget meeting, which was posted just like this meeting, it's no different. I was denied my First Amendment rights as well as Montana code annotated 7-1-4142. This is just one of the codes they broke over and over again by their illegal tact of denial of speech and bullying of a dissenting opinion of a person whom you don't like. A public meeting affords the opportunity of the community to participate verbally, whether you like them or not, plus, how do you know what the person was going to add? I will state for the record again, in my opinion, their constant attempt at bullying and stifling the public from speaking at meetings which is open to the public is both illegal and immoral. Since you four trustees are Mr. McGee's supervisor, I am notifying you this of writing. I'm asking this from you four, call a special meeting, which I will be happy to supply a videotape of this incident, along with other people to whom this has been done to as well, to address these illegal actions by both Mr. McGee and Ms. Appleby. At this meeting, discuss Mr. McGee's actions, at this meeting, discuss Ms. Pat Appleby's actions. At this board meeting, I think the board should distance itself from Ms. Appleby's actions on the night of 5/28/13. Ms. Appleby is to recuse herself from any formal discipline in regards to Mr. McGee's actions on that night. I have not handed this over to an attorney yet, and I expect to hear from one of the four, thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, way to go, John McGee, you're doing a great job, that's all I gotta say.
And who are you?
I'm Robert Stockton.
Oh, I didn't see you, can I, you can stand up so I can see you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to our facilities, oh, I'm sorry, one more person?
Hi, my name is Julie Logan, and I've never been to one of these meetings before, I actually live out of district and helping to get my daughter into this school, and I'm just barely, vaguely...
I'm sorry, you gotta talk, you're supposed to...
Oh, I'm sorry, I talked to you, okay. I'm vaguely familiar with, with what's going on here, but I just wish people could, if you could, encourage yourself to be tolerant, forgiving, and, you know, just, these people are here to work for us and make a good school, you don't need to have an ego and be worried about freedom of speech, I think they're ready to give us freedom of speech, I mean, I'm nobody, but I just think it's kinda silly.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so now we're gonna move to our out-of-district students applications, okay, we have on the agenda, new non-resident student applications, and you, you were presented a list of students who've applied, we have the applications here for you to review if you'd like to. At this time, we have conducted a review of each of these applications, and find that each of them are students in good standing, and recommendations to the board is to approve each one of these applications as presented. And so, we could do, call each individual member up, and determine whether or not they would like to discuss their application at the board, if you have questions regarding their application, if they'd like to review it, we may do so, but they do have the right to go into an executive session if they so choose, because the rights of privacy of their child suffices, they probably try to know. First, new non-resident student application is Cole Conley. Is Cole, is Cole's parent here?
Did you say Cowan?
Cowan?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to move into executive session?
I guess I'm not sure exactly.
That means that everybody clears the room except you and your child and any, anything like that? Okay. Did you have any questions of us, anything that, okay, and what grade will your son be going to?
Sixth.
Okay. This might be a good time, before we go all the way down the list, to give our little spiel about having out-of-district students. We have a lot of out-of-district students, that's, the policy is that if having out-of-district students does not require us hiring an extra aide or an extra teacher or having an extra classroom, we are usually, and the student is in good standing, no discipline problems, good grades, all of that, it's usually straightforward for you to be a student at our school. I will tell you though, that if you get into trouble, you don't just get the principal doing whatever needs to be done, you, a lot of times end up in front of the board, and we have the option to say, we're sorry, can't come here anymore. So unfortunately, or fortunately as the case may be, you get to be held to a little bit higher standard because you're from out-of-district. So as long as everybody's all good with that, and you have to reapply every year to the office, so that's something to keep in mind, and again, we would evaluate each year whether having the out-of-district student placement would then cause us a teacher problem or an aide problem, anything like that. Did I miss anything, Vicky?
No.
Okay. So, if you're all good, okay, let's go on to, is it Jevon Davis? Okay, did you need to move into executive session?
No.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
What grade would your child be in?
I have two, one will be in 10th grade and one will be 7th grade.
10th and 7th?
Uh huh.
Okay. All right, how about Jose Diaz? Okay, and did you guys need to move into...
No.
No, we're all good, any questions?
No. Those of you that knew Miguel Lara, this is his younger brother.
Okay.
That was there for the school last year.
Okay.
Very charismatic young man, and he'll be a senior this year.
Senior, okay. All right, how about Randall Fel, is it Felby?
Felby, I'm his grandmother.
Okay.
Diane Ross.
Diane?
He'd be a second grader.
Second grader?
Or he'd be living with us.
Do you wanna have executive session for discussion?
No, because I went to this last year.
Okay. Good enough, how about Jacob Grayson's family? You're back there, hello? Did you wanna have executive session for any reason?
No.
Any questions for us?
No.
What grade?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, all right. Odin Pagek?
Pagek.
Pagek? What grade?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, all right, and any questions or executive session needed? Okay. Don't feel like I'm trying to hustle, if you really wanna say executive session, speak up, okay? Ethan Jaeger, parents here? No, okay, so we're gonna put that one aside. Emma Keller, hello?
Hello.
Any questions?
No.
What grade?
10th, or 9th, sorry.
9th, okay. Ivan Martino?
Right here.
Okay.
This is Ivan.
Ivan, sorry.
Debbie Ashmore, we're his host family, she's from Spain.
Okay.
And 4.0 student, wonderful kid, I think he'd be a great addition.
Lovely, what grade did you say?
Senior.
Senior, okay, all right, very good. Emma Mickelson? Back there? Okay, hello?
Hi.
What grade?
1st grade.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Kendall Plant?
Yeah, right here.
Okay, hello?
Hi.
What grade?
She'll be kindergarten.
Kindergarten, any questions?
No, we're good.
Okay. Elizabeth Rafferty? Hello? Any questions?
No, I have five actually.
Okay, so, what grades will that be?
Three 9th graders, 4th and 5th grade.
4th and what was the last hit? All right, oh, okay, I guess I didn't read all the way down, so thank you for going there. All right, so Cameron Weber?
Yep.
Hello?
Yep.
Any questions?
No, we're good.
What grade?
9th.
9th, okay, and Canyon Williams? Hello?
Hi.
Any questions? What grade?
3rd.
3rd, okay. Okay, so Mr. McGee is recommending?
The recommendation is to admit each of these students based on their records.
We can't, you're, you're back here.
The recommendation is to admit each of these students based on their records, they are in good standing, and we believe would be good additions to the school district. We do want, as the administration, to let these parents know that, we strongly believe that out-of-district students' attendance in our district is a privilege and not a right, and the educational right of your children do exist in your home districts, therefore, if there are problems or issues that arise, we do expect you to go above and beyond, come in and work with the school to, you know, alleviate the concerns that we may have, otherwise, we are more than willing to bring you to the board and invite you to go back to your own district. We have had to do that in the past, but for the most part, we have had very good experience here and not had many problems with out-of-district students, and I see this group of students that are asking to come in to be as good quality as we have led in the past.
So since I read, since I already read everybody's name?
Can we approve their warrants?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna exclude him.
I'll also move the...
We have discussion first, I was...
We have a motion first. Motion's in the second first.
Also move that the applicants, except for Ethan Jaeger, because we didn't have a parent.
Parents not here, on here.
Excepted for the 2013-14 school year.
Okay, so now discussion.
Just a couple quick questions on, I'm looking at the taxpayer side of this, what's it cost, what's the cost to educate a high school student here at Florence and a elementary school, what's a school's cost?
We receive A and B dollars for these students that are in.
I understand, that's A and B money from OPI.
Correct.
So we receive this number, I checked into that, so elementary receive $5,075, and high school receives $6,500?
That was OPI's website.
Correct. So, that's what we receive, what's, so what does it actually cost us to educate them? Would you, the accurate way to figure that, take our total budget, divide it by the number of students, and come up with that figure?
That's one way to compute it if you like, there are other ways you could look at it also.
Do you have any idea what, what that cost is?
Per student, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Did you come up with the number?
Well, if you take our total budget, which is, well, does that, what's, I know our total, our budget is 5.298, what's our, what's our federal funding, how much is that?
Federal funding, I don't have that off the top of my head.
No, no, I ain't have it to...
Well, we, it was in those reports that we had at the budget meeting?
I don't think the federal funding was in there.
I think that funding stream was in there, wasn't it?
I'd be more than happy to...
Do you remember?
No, it wasn't, I looked... It was general fund budget, it was state, yeah, so, I mean, that, that's what, that's, don't get me wrong, I'm a parent, I'm going with you guys, it's nothing to do with that, I'm simply, just simply wanting to know what our, you know, we're bringing, we're at 80 district, out-of-district with this addition here, and if we're receiving, you know, all I'm saying is, Missoula County charges $1,300 tuition per school, I know it's been brought up again, it's obviously gotta cover for whatever compensation they need to educate. My only question was, as, you know, I'm voting on these guys, how much is it costing us, I mean, that's a realistic figure to ask for when you're asking me to bring in for the taxpayers, you know, they, you know, if it's costing us $7,000 per elementary kid, and that, that would fit, that's what, if that's the case, then that, I'm over, how does that work?
And the reality of it is that, really, the, there's already the teacher, there's already the room, we've already got the building, we've already got all of these things set in place, the students that are coming in, if they were not accepted, we would be, we would be without that, don't, don't...
Right, I understand, but all I'm asking is, what's it cost? It's hard, it's hard for me to vote... It's hard, it's hard for me to vote on something, I don't know too much. The state, that's what they say, the state figures it off of, of, of per kid, how much money we get is based off student.
And remember, 80% of our general budget goes to salaries.
Right.
So.
So, all I'm saying, all right, so the math I did, you know, just to, that without the proper information showed that it cost us more than what we received. I'm not gonna throw numbers out because I don't have one, but with, what, with the, the formula you gave me and then what I'm showing, that's what I came up with.
I'd wanna make a decisions, or a suggestion to you that maybe is appropriate or not, but some of these questions that you're bringing to the table now that are making it hard for you to, to, um, feel like you're voting knowledgeably should probably be, once you get your budget packet, or your packet, probably should be directed to the district's office before this meeting so that we can have a chance to have those answers for you.
Well, I just thought it was one simple ask question of that.
I mean, most of us don't file that kind of, I don't file that kind of stuff in my head, I don't have, I don't have that capacity. I don't even know my kid's phone number, so I'm sorry.
So, obviously I do, I do business differently, that's also, I'm just, I'm here to, you know, it's numbers, I mean, I can't, it's hard for me to make decisions without numbers, that's all I'm saying, but I'm done.
Financial is a different world.
Okay, yeah, I understand, I'm learning quickly, trust me.
Can I say?
I know.
Sir.
Since I've been on the board, since Mr. McGee has been here, we have always had end of the year monies. Meaning that there was money left over out of the general fund that we were able to do things like carpet rooms, address roof issues, I mean, buy pre-empting boards, those kinds of things, so, and we have in the last several years been accepting out-of-district students. Had that been a financial burden on the district, I think it would've shown up there with us not being able to have the, you know.
We did ask for Mel and everything, didn't we?
Well, that's, that's true, but, um, but we've always, always been able to use that extra money at the end of the year to, um, address some things.
Okay, well, I don't wanna leave everybody here, they got plenty to do, that's my question.
But I think, I think Pat's suggestion probably is a very good one, and those are, these are valid questions that could be addressed. Mr. McGee could, you know, could answer a lot of these things before, before a board meeting.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, we finished the discussion and we're gonna call for the question, and the motion is to accept these, uh, kids for out-of-district for the coming school year. Except for Ethan. Um, then they can reapply and we'll be here at another meeting. Uh, so all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you everyone, um, we are, you, those of you who are here for just this portion, you're welcome to leave if you'd like. We'd love to have you stay and observe the rest of the meeting, but you certainly can leave if you'd like to. And thank you for coming. People who are here with existing. Sit tight, we're coming to you next, okay? So we just handled the new applications. Okay, so we're gonna go on then to, uh, existing non-resident student applications. Mr. McGee?
Okay, there is a listing of our packet of existing, uh, non-resident student application. We have in this binder here, all of their applications, we'll keep on file. Most of these students have done a very nice job with us, there are a couple of exceptions that I would need for the board to understand. Keaton Jaeger is a student, his parents have been invited here tonight to talk with regard to his, uh, out-of-district student application. There's also the Elkington girls, Maria and, uh, Julia. Julia, but I believe their dad is here tonight, correct? Uh, another, and in that case, I would recommend we go into an executive session to discuss that matter. But the rest of the applications, uh, we're looking to have approved as presented.
Well, so we will, do we need to, are they allowed?
Yes, we should have.
Okay. So who again, who, I'm sorry, who again do we need to?
These three right here.
Okay, I'm, here we go, and, okay. Becky here, can we read? Mitchell Elbers? And that's Ava also.
Yep.
Moira Anthon?
No, I mean, they don't have, exist and they, they have been told they don't have to be.
Okay, okay, so I don't, then, do I need to read through these again? It has to go in the minutes, I think, doesn't it? It has to go in the record? All right, okay, here we go. Sorry. Ethan Olivia and Sarah Gerard, Colin Chambers, Hannah Cowan, Tyler Vera, Bryce and Bailey DeWitt, Mitchell Edgar, Paul. No, is that, is he, is he with the other?
Yeah, Paul and Angela are fine.
Paul and Angela, okay, Paul and Angela Elkington?
Elkington.
Elkington? Roland Fisher, Darren Gilbert.
I forgot my Michael.
Oh, Michael Elkington. Sarah, you shouldn't have any of these. Michael Elkington? Okay, we're back at Aaron Gilbert, Garrett Drifson, Holly Hale, Tyson Hockenson, Keenan Henderson, Jayden Henderson, Jared Henry, Colin Jalinski, Sarah and Emily Juden, Coleman Caden, Jacob Killen, Amelia Kiki, Savannah Perskeke, Jimmy Perskeke, Kaylin Lawson, Corin Lawson, Breaker Lucas, Austin Minzen, Aiden Minzen, Avery Minzen, Craig Mertens, Annalise Malagio, Gianna Malagio, Noel, Noel Malagio? Did I say that?
Yeah.
Time closed. And I have. Okay, um, Armani Morales, Jase Pancake, Kaden Plasmer, Emily Roberts, Shankill Roberts, um, Allison Rusk, Riley Rusk, Brendan Schneider, Claire, Elise Schneider, Hunter Stewart, Megan St. Germain, Alex Talby, Sean Tree, Brett Boltman, Gavin Weber, Brad Wilson. So we're gonna second that, right? Yeah. Thank you Dorothy. All right, so any discussion there? Any parents in that group need to say anything? Okay, so call for the question, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, and you all may stay or go as you choose. And then we will ask, um, I just want the Elkington, Elkingtons. All right, so I guess we're gonna go with the, uh, Elkington, Elkington's, uh, family, and, um, do you think we should go through executive session? Is that, would you like to have that?
I essentially correct the answer.
Okay. Um, I think that I, that it protects the privacy of your children, so it's probably for the best that we do that.
Okay.
Okay, so that means everybody else has to go stand out of the hall. Uh. And then as soon as we're done, we'll let you know. All right, so, um, I guess we're back and we're back in session here. If I can make a motion, they're allowed, Olivia Elkington, um, for, and as an out-of-district student, in the 14th and 14th school year. Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Aye. Jessica Julie? Yeah. Um, so now we need a. Yep.
Yeah.
Let's take.
I'll take that out, a motion capable, um, Maria Elkington's out-of-district, uh, application until the latest regular board meeting.
Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Aye. All right, thank you everybody for hanging in, and if you wanna continue to stay, you may, or you may go.
His, his application.
Okay.
The nation's, the highest application.
All right, so do you wanna handle that at this point?
We can unhandle it, it's longer, it's not discussed.
So, you need a motion for that? Yeah. Only that you deny Keaton Jaeger's, um, out-of-district, the 14th and 14th school year.
He's off program.
I have Keaton, I'm a regular there. You can add the other one. Listen. Okay, so. Further discussion?
Hey, why we rep, based off of, uh, based off of the fact that there'd be additional, uh, resources that the school district would have to, uh, hire on in order to maintain its attendance, or you have to hire on special education.
All right, and since the parents are here, um, we would afford them an opportunity to come and talk to us later. Here, okay, so, all right, so, um, call for the question, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, so we're on to, uh, facility.
Okay, lower elementary roof replacement, for the last few years we've been talking about the need to, um, do some major repairs to the elementary roof. Leaks like a sin, just to, to put it short, and we have, we've discussed the fact that the metal roofing is all pitted out up there and that we've gone in and we've done patch job after patch job, that the patches seem to, to last about nine months to a year and then we're back to, uh, mysterious water patterns showing up in our elementary building. And so, the fact of the matter is that we are at a point in the school year where we may have end-of-year monies that might afford us the opportunity to fix that problem. And in previous years, we've talked about it being a higher priority need for us to address for the school's facility. Failure, failure to address that problem is going to lend to bigger issues with the facility in the long run. We currently are monitoring it very closely for mold, to make sure that we don't have mold occurring. But there's no guarantees that when you do have a leak and you do have moisture getting into your building, it can create that issue. Another issue is that it could compromise the structural integrity of the building, uh, by rusting out, uh, parts of the building that, um, you know, just aren't designed to handle the moisture. So, one of the things that I have asked the board to consider tonight is that, uh, we have bid, uh, specs that have been created for the replacement of that roof and to advertise it and have it where by the end of the month, we could have contractor bids come in that would give us an opportunity to see who is able to do the job and what the job might cost. Even if we receive the bids, if we do not have the monies, then we just, uh, table that action until we are able to afford, uh, the opportunity. But if we do have end-of-year monies available, then it might be an opportunity for this board to say, okay, let's get this problem taken care of. So tonight, what I'm asking the board to do is to go ahead and approve, uh, the terms and conditions of the bid so that, um, contractors may, uh, bid on the specs for this job. And please be aware that the looking material we're asking for is the same material that we have on other parts of our facility that we have rewrote recently. As you recall, a couple of years ago, we rewrote the area above the library here, gone back over the map and computer lab areas by, uh, Mr. Edgar and Mr. Stewart's room. Last year, we rewrote, um, with the same material, got around by the, uh, middle steel wing with Karen Kettit, on down around by, um, Mrs. Hackathon's room. So what we're looking at is a membrane roof where, uh, the current metal would be left in place and then there would be some, uh, fiber that would be put up there to fill the trenches and that fiber board would create a decking system where the membrane roof would be attached and put in and then the rain gutters that would go along with it.
Also move. All right, discussion.
Uh, we receive, so you're saying there's spec, you won't, uh, accept any alternate spec material? Some, another bid comes in. What type of material? I don't know, I mean, you're saying you're specifying the same type that we've had on there. If we get a quote from another guy with some other product, will we, we'd accept that if it shows good performance?
If it has the same, you know, like, we're, we have, um, 60 mil TPO.
Right, so as long as it's approved, as long as it's based off your spec that you're giving me right here, you'll, all right. Who do we, where are you gonna advertise, who's, where do we put this? It would be in the Missoula?
Correct.
Do you ever, what do you, is it open to publishing, like, why don't you use the plans exchange or something? Is that a possibility, more people, more contractors would get?
Well, we are required to advertise it in a medium that we believe goes to most of our taxpayers in Missoula, is that?
Is really?
And so that's where we put it.
You'll open it up, in the Missoula fair open bid?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Could we somehow put in, put something in there that says we could do it, do the job in order to get, have end-of-year monies or? Sounds a little, uh, burdensome.
Well, thing is, if we didn't have the monies, we'd probably try and patch it again. The problem with the patch job is for every thousand dollars we put up there, it doesn't seem to last very long and we're trying to take a long-term fix to this issue.
Sure.
My, my worry is that, um, it could come in a lot more expensive than we anticipate. I'm hopeful that this job can come in somewhere in the range of 80 to 100,000 dollars. But if it, if it far exceeds that, then I think we've probably got some issues. When will we know if we have end-of-year monies or when will we have that resource? Uh, we're currently running payroll and stuff for this month, and so we should have those numbers shortly.
If we will know, we'll have it then?
We'll have it.
In June?
We'll have it, that's June meeting.
Then that's June 26th.
Yeah.
So basically, you're, no, we're just trying to get people to tell us what they think it might cost?
Yeah.
Is that a big cost, is that a commitment? Is there a timeframe?
Yeah, we'd need to award the bid before the end of June in order to use this year's money to complete the project.
All right, any further discussion?
Oh, hello, just a question, is there any money in the emergency fund? It sounds from what you're talking about, like Mel was just saying, it's pretty bad. And to sort of drip and drag, it doesn't make much sense anymore.
Well, we have committed quite a bit of our resources to a septic issue that is a bigger emergency.
Take it anywhere.
All right, so, uh, call for the question, all those in favor to motion? Aye. Okay, so gas line leak.
The school, it's like I said, that we're building a new school from the inside out and the gas line is another example of what we do. Recently, we had a sm, an odor out on the playground that we could not detect where it was coming from, uh, how it was originating. And we thought that there was a smell of gas, then it wouldn't be there, so we, we came to the conclusion that it looked like one of the regulators on the side of the building that, for the gas line, that does have a vent on, so, um, and could vent off gas at times was perhaps causing the issue. We called in Northwest Energy, they came in with, um, a fairly sophisticated sniffer and tracked the lie and found that underground we had a leak somewhere. And they gave us apparently a, a radius of where they believed the leak might exist. We did some excavation on that to determine what was going on and it was determined that the line is leaking in multiple places. So at this point, we have shut down the gas line to the high school science lab and we need to fix that and we have a contractor coming on site to do those repairs this week. So Acor is gonna come in and cut out the concrete and the house vault and then the contractor. and then the contractor will come in and do the repairs to this line and put a new gas line in for us. And it's just, you know, it's one of those unforeseen things, we were, we were not aware that that was an issue, but it became an issue, and we are now having to fix it. So, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that.
Okay, so that's information on it.
Did, did we, did we get an estimate on that cost of that type of thing?
It was an emergency fix, and, uh, you know, we do not believe it's going to exceed the fifty thousand dollar limit, but it, it's something that had to be taken care of.
But, but we have no idea what it had cost?
We do know that Acor is gonna cost five to six hundred.
Okay, so we are on to, um, personnel.
Personnel, alright. Yeah, certified staff, fifth grade position, we're going to table this position. We were prepared to bring Kayla Freely forward for recommendation to fill the fifth grade position. However, uh, we were noticed this morning by Kayla that she has accepted a job at Missoula, and she's taking her resignation effect, um, at the end of this school year, which is today. So, for that reason, uh, the board needs to table that position.
Also moved. So, we have to make a motion on that?
Um, no.
No? Okay, alright, I want some.
Vicki, is there gonna be discussion on that? Is there, can we just ask if the, if it's going to be, is fifth grade going to hire another teacher? I mean, is that the plan, would it, what's...
We're currently studying it, uh, we have applications, we're reviewing applicants. But the Budget and Finance Committee is going to be looking at its budget come the end of this month.
Is the board aware that the fourth grade is, has twenty-eight and twenty-nine kids in it right now?
We've received all the letters and info, so it's something that the Budget Committee is looking, how can we squeeze that into there? So, it's, it's, will come up after Budget Committee makes a recommendation to the board.
Oh, so there, you guys are aware that...
We, yeah, we all got the letters and the info from everybody, so...
When did we get that?
We're looking on it.
Yeah, I, I'm not trying to stir the pot, I just wanted to know if that was a decision.
No, no decision has been made at this point, we're still looking at it.
Yeah, okay.
Pardon me?
I said, we're hearing you.
Yeah. But this was to handle, this was to handle... Yeah, this, this position was to have handled Mrs. Wilding's retirement spot. So, um, that's what this was about. Your thing will come up far beyond that.
Oh, it's not my thing.
Yeah, I mean, but you know, but you...
I didn't even sign a letter.
You know what I mean? Alright.
I had a question, my kid is in fourth grade going to fifth, I understand her comment. What about the third graders coming to the fourth grade, how big are those classes?
I don't know.
Are they much smaller or bigger, I mean, that's how I was thinking.
I could tell you.
Are you guys...
Yeah, I have a third grade, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six.
The same thing, okay, but three teachers.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have a basic idea, but we're, we have, we better take that up at a time when we actually know what we're talking about. So, talk to Mr. McGee and see what we need to do, you know, to exchange information there, please?
If you have questions, I'd be more than happy to sit down and, you know, explain where we're at.
Because we're looking, we'll look at, see who's gonna be, you know, who moved up and all that kind of stuff.
So, it must be a darn good school with all these kids coming here, huh? Ready, May?
I agree.
Okay, so, um, now we're gonna go on to extracurricular staff, and we're gonna start with annual advisor.
Is recommended that Terry Bryan fill the yearbook advisor position for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year.
Also moved. Discussion? Okay, uh, call for the question, all those in favor? Aye.
We have the, uh, band performance contract for Jennifer Cootie as our band director, and is recommended that we need to approve her band performance contract for the two thousand fourteen school year.
Also moved. Discussion? Yeah, so, uh, call for the question, all those in favor? Aye. Alright.
The pep band contract for Mrs. Cootie for the two thousand fourteen school year.
Call for the question? And the eighth graders are gonna be a great addition, they were so good last night, they were so good. Yes, I was thinking the same thing. So, call for the question, all those in favor? Aye.
We have Dirk Schmidt with the drama performance contract, who did a very nice job with, uh, his programs this year, and is recommended that he is hired on again to perform the drama contract.
Discussion? Yeah, yeah, okay, so call for the question, all those in favor? Aye.
And then we have the choir performance contracts, and Mrs. Emily Hall, who has been recommended for years, hired for that performance contract for the thirteen, fourteen school year. Also moved.
I want to know how they play piano standing up. That's, that's hard to do, and to do it, and watch my kids, but keeping everything together, you do an excellent job.
So, discussion, call for the question, all those in favor? Aye.
Little school activity director, we'd like to table that at this time. And we're going to the head track coach position. We have Mariah Patterson, who has been our head track coach for the past couple of years, and she's been very successful in working with our kids. So, is recommended that we need to rehire Mariah Patterson as a head track coach for the thirteen, fourteen school year.
Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Aye.
And we have two assistant coaches that we'd like to come back and work with early on. That is Brian Newman and Keith Balfour. We do have one other coach, assistant coach, that we will need to fill that position. We're going to need to advertise that and get that filled as soon as possible. So, recommendations for Brian Newman and Keith Balfour as assistant track coaches for the thirteen, fourteen school year. Also moved.
Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Then we have...
Do we need to move on to opening that coaching position?